Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. I need to get a motion to go into the 104th special session, please. Emily moved Shelley second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The only item on the agenda is the approval of variance from City Code, Chapter 155 Noise.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor council through a variance from the city of Hagerstown's noise ordinance under section 155-6 of the city code for the North Point Development Project on Basil Boulevard to include North Point Development and its construction contractors. The project requires contractors to pour concrete slabs and perform associated work from midnight to approximately 7:00 a.m. The schedule of work is expected to be up to four nights per week, the nights of Sunday into Monday through Wednesday into Thursday, with Thursday into Friday being alternate night in case of rain. The project is expected to run from July 12, 2020 to November 1, 2020, with majority of work expected to be completed by September 30, 2020.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
She carries. All right, so we'll come out of the special session and into the work session with an update from Scott Nice-Waner, City Administrator on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to everybody and their faces again, or most of your faces again. I hope that, you know, we've done some change, obviously with council chambers, hope this suits everybody. It does cut down the number of people we can have in here, obviously, but I think we've done a good job in making this as safe a place as possible. Couple of things, as far as an update goes, city facilities, all city facilities will be open on July 13. That includes all of our external locations and all floors of City Hall. There will be a mask required to be worn at all times by visitors when they are in the building. They will have to check, if you're coming to the upper floors, you'll check in at the front desk. If there's no mask, we'll have masks available at the front desk to give, but if you don't have a mask, you don't get on the upper floors. So, we're going to be very strict with that, but hopefully we won't have any problems. The moratorium on residential and commercial units with dwelling units, the governor's moratorium was renewed until August 1. That, we were hopeful that that moratorium would be lifted so we could start looking at identifying and interrupting services on utilities. That's not to be a negative thing, but we are now over a million dollars in long-term arrears for both electric and water wastewater utilities. As I've said before, the longer this moratorium goes on, the harder it's going to be for customers to make payments, and we don't want to be in a situation where we have to cut services. Since we've had the lobby open for the past week, there has been some increased traffic downstairs, but again, just want to make sure that we stress, if you haven't paid your utility bill, your electric bill, your water bill, that includes wastewater and landfill and recycling, even if you can't pay the whole bill, please try to pay something. We are working, we're as liberal as we can be on payment plans. We can also help you get information to a social agency for assistance, but please, if you can pay something, please try to make a payment. We don't want to get into a situation where we have hundreds of cutoffs once that moratorium is lifted. We will work with everyone on this, everyone, we will work with payment plans during this time, so I can't stress that enough, please try to make a payment. One thing we are going to do, the moratorium does not include commercial customers or industrial customers that do not have dwelling units as part of the account. We are going to start this week with 24-hour notices on those, focusing primarily on those that have not paid since November, pre-COVID days, and there are many. So again, we need, we need help with that. We don't want to cut service to anyone, but when it comes to commercial and industrial, it's also a way we identify if there's even still activity in the building. We have identified several that are empty now, that we were not informed, that we were afraid of, and I think I've, I mentioned this several times to you all, we're going to have a lot of walkaways, and we need to know what those are so we can get that service cut, and it doesn't continue to add fixed fees and whatever additional usage there may be. So we are going to start that process this week on commercial industrial where there is no dwelling unit involved. The pool is open, we are at a third capacity of the pool, we don't have any plans to increase that at this time. Rodney's here, I think everything's gone fairly well at the pool, from what I've driven by and seen, it looks like, you know, everyone's doing the right thing, and that's all we can ask with masks and social distancing, so I feel pretty good about that. I think staff is happy downstairs with the protections that have been, that have been put in place down there. Again, we haven't seen the rush that we will see once the moratorium is over, so hopefully that won't be as bad as it could be. Lastly, we are going to have movies in the park this Friday night, it'll be Aladdin at City Park, July 10, starting about 8:45. We're going to give it a try, see how it goes. The park staff has done a great job in putting up and creating guidelines as to how they're going to section off certain benches so that you can't sit to maintain a social distance, we're going to see how it goes, and if people do the right thing, we'll do it again. If we find we have issues, then we'll evaluate at that time and see where we go. That is it for me on COVID.
Thank you.
Scott, I do have a question.
Yep.
If you don't mind. Is there a way to do a PSA on our television station, or maybe put flyers at the pool in regard to being able to do payment plans, maybe reaching out to the pastors to see if there's like something that we could put in their bulletins?
Wes.
Wes.
We were going to work, Wes has worked with Beth downstairs and with Jordi Newman, and we are going to be putting that exact type of information out, we're going to tag-team it with CACs so that they can also provide their information on social agencies and what's going to be available to them. One thing I failed to mention, and it reminded me, we had talked about a couple weeks ago, CDBG CV funding, where we hoped that some of that funding would be able to go to utility relief. John has confirmed with HUD that that is not the case. It can only go to rent and to avoid evictions for rent and mortgage subsidies. We cannot use any of that money for utility relief, that was a huge disappointment to hear that. I know Jordi was really hopeful that that would be something they could use in addition. But yes, we will definitely be doing that this month, and we'll, we're going to saturate as much as we can, we talked about a press conference as well, and try to get as much of that information out as we can.
Yeah, I think reaching the individuals, you know, like, again, church bulletins and neighborhoods and the potter and the pool and such like that would probably be helpful.
We had that ready to go, but then when the moratorium, we'll try to make it, you know, more timely.
Yeah, and I think through Jordi and CAC, they were going to print up some flyers, so I think that was part of that whole process, was they were going to do some flyers, so I think that's what you're talking about, Shelley, providing something like that at those locations.
Yeah, just so it can be visual and seen, not just social media. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Don, you're up, nondiscrimination policy.
Good afternoon. You have in front of you Personnel Policy 400. It's a rather old policy and hasn't been updated in some years, but prior to the COVID emergency responses, we were talking a little bit about the Human Rights Scorecard given to us annually by the Human Rights Commission. Those conversations continued throughout the emergency period, the culmination of which is in front of you today. As you will recall, we were pretty disappointed a couple of years ago when we got our scorecard and didn't score as well as we would have liked. It increased in score last year to a little over 50 points, but we are excited to provide the Human Rights Commission with a copy of this particular policy. We believe that it will raise our score significantly, at least we hope. As an aside, because of some recent Supreme Court activity, personal protections have been expanded, we have included those in this policy, but we need to take a look at the city code as well now, because the code will be out, it is already out of date theoretically. The, the policy basically updates everything that needs to be updated, it's ready to go. What it does do is provides a level of protections for all employees and the environment that they work within, and covers all unlawful discrimination practices. It assures protection for all federally and state mandated classes, including gender, race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, disability, marital status, citizenship, national origin, genetic information. The updated policy makes very clear that the law and the policies of the city provide that disparate, or prohibit disparate treatment on the basis of any legally protected categories with regards to the terms, conditions, privileges, and the prerequisites of employment. It also reiterates that the city will not tolerate those things and provides a level of process for folks that feel like they have been discriminated against or retaliated against as a result of reporting that, that discrimination or harassment. We, we bring it to you as an information item, obviously I will take whatever input you have before I finish it up, and we're ready to go with it, so with no further information from me, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to thank you, this is a really important goal, I think, for our city to get to. I just wanted to thank you guys and also the Hagerstown folks for the input that they provided to try to improve our Human Rights Commission scorecard. I anticipate it will go up because of this, and that may not be important to some people, but it's very important to members of the LGBTQ community. They do look at that to see when they're considering moving, if they're, our community is friendly and welcome, and our community is friendly and welcome, and that certainly was not reflective a couple of years ago, so I appreciate you guys working on this.
I do have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to cover it or not, or if you think it is covered, but when I look under this section of harassment, and I notice that the last paragraph saying what it includes, placed on walls, there are also employers' earnings and company time, or using company equipment by email, phone, text message, social media networking sites or other means. What if any expectation do we have of our employees with regards to the social media posts that aren't done on company time, not done on company computer, but are on their own private social pages and are not done on time in the city?
This particular policy impacts employees on and off duty and assures a nondiscrimination attitude, if you will, or behavior. However, as, as we all know, we walk an extremely fine line in making certain that people have a level of protection for saying what they'd like to say, using their opinion, while at the same time making certain that they understand that if that opinion is such that it is discriminatory in nature, they will have to, they will have to be held accountable for that. You know, we, you can, you can try to change words as much as possible, but our, our approach at this point is, is to use a level of training and development as a way of changing behavior or modifying behavior that may or may not exist at this point, as opposed to using a level of discipline. We find it a more effective approach on HR side.
And I think unfortunately, very unfortunately in this day and age, any of us who get on social media, see some of these posts, and generally what you find with those posts are, this is where the person works, make sure you contact the employer. So that's, that's my concern. I'm hoping we never face that, okay? But I just wanted to make sure that, that that would be covered under these policies.
Interestingly, I've had a couple of conversations here in the last few weeks with, with folks, and my advice is always that if you have a private social media page somewhere, or, you know, one of those pages out there that your, your name is all over, you probably should remove your employer, there's no reason for it, and, and your views don't necessarily represent the views of the city of Hagerstown, and we don't want the two of them mixed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Thank you, Don. You're welcome.
Public art across Maryland.
Hello up there.
Hello Rodney.
Hi Rodney.
I have a couple opportunities to go over with you, and also wanted to talk a little bit about the Art Committee that we've had for some time, I think it's time for some of the, for us to update that, so I'd like to go over that with you. So they're completing the Muller's Sustained Wind Art Piece of Art on the Cultural Trail, and with that, we're kind of ready to move into something else if you're so inclined. The Art Committee that we have last met in February, at that time, they recommended that two sites that we look at to, to put some energy and seek grants for to improve with public art. The first is where we tore down the Park Circle Service Station at 319 Summit Avenue, and the second is to do something to address the deteriorating colorblind mural on West Washington Street. I'll talk about both of those separately. On Summit Avenue, it's a really kind of iconic place in Hagerstown, it's got a great view of the park, the museum, and it seems like that would be a suitable location for a piece of art that could sit there right beside the Cultural Trail and be, be very visible. We don't really have a theme or a plan for what we want to do, so there are planning grants that you can get where we would meet with the community and facilitate input on what to put there, and then come back to you with, with that input. Then we would, down the road, once we have an artist and a theme, then you could apply for grants to actually implement it. The state grants are all, they've dropped all their matches now because of the COVID pandemic, so the money you can get from the state now doesn't have any match requirements. So that's one site. The second site is the mural on West Washington Street. It was painted by school students, I think in the 1990s, and it's really deteriorated a lot in the last few years. It doesn't really make a very good presentation anymore, and I think we need to do something to address that. We could apply for a implementation grant for 20,000 to replace that or do something in front of it, and the way that would work is we would do a call through the Arts Council, they would seek artists, they have to be Maryland artists, they'd seek artists, and then we would have a jury pick what the art would be for there. There's a lot of vehicles go past there every day, 10,000, so it's a visible site also, and again, we would work with the Arts Council to make that happen. There's some city funds left over from some of the bridge treatment projects we did a few years back, you remember? Some of those things we got done fairly efficiently, so there are funds available there we could use for matches if you chose to do that, and so I think we could put together two really pretty nice projects with the funding that's available through the grants and what city funds we have. And then as far as the committee goes, it was established when the Cultural Trail was just getting started, some of those folks, Rebecca Massey Lane, for example, is retiring, it's time that we update that committee, and I think we ought to put out a request for people to be on that committee and have you appoint a, a new committee, an updated committee, and we should accept applications to do that, and then they could help us facilitate some of the stuff in the future. So that's, that's my comments. Welcome your input on how you want to handle these two projects, if this is two things you want to do, or your thoughts.
Hey Rodney, would your recommendation be to put the committee back together first before?
I think we should, yes.
It seems to, rather than us decide on an idea for what to put in place of the gas station and?
Right.
And then have a, do committee come on board and?
I think that would be the first step, is get the committee updated. But then I think we also ought to involve the community some too, and especially the one at Park Circle, to get their feedback on what they would like to see there, and have the committee work with them too.
I think it would be important too, on a call for art, to make sure it's really hit locally. I mean, I understand it can be from all over Maryland, but to really make sure, because we've been getting a ton of requests lately for, for art, different art projects, so to make sure that the public, local public knows about it is important.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am definitely, I really think community surveys, or, you know, community input is, is very important. I think that for me, you know, with all these tough decisions and the unknown for, you know, what's happening with COVID and the future, my only fear is the optics of doing, I know that it's not using general fund money, but the optics of doing art at this point in time and city projects, it, I understand that it's not tax, and I understand that it's not general fund money, but I am a little bit concerned about the optics of doing the art at this point.
Well, even if we just use $20,000, if we applied for the grant and got it, $20,000, you could do something significant with that amount of money.
Okay.
Well, and to clarify too, because I did reach out to Michelle, because I figured that question would come up, this money cannot be used for salary and benefits, so I figured that that would be the big pushback is, oh, you're spending money on art, but you can't spend money on salary and benefits, so this is a different pocket of money, so I think as long as that is?
Clear.
Clear. Hey, Mrs. Harold Mail over there.
Right.
Very clear.
Headline, headline.
That, I think it would go over well.
Well, and I also have to note, I mean, we're talking about doing things for our community, for people that is free, whether it's our parks or it's things like this, and, and also from the time we start this to the time we finish this, also will take quite an amount of time.
It does.
So I don't think, I don't think it will be a problem, especially if we talk grant funding. My only comment would be, the one thing that, that I would like you to consider Rodney, are little things. That's the one thing that I haven't seen in the Cultural Trail, whether there, you know, things that run on the wind, but you know, 20, 50, $100 items that aren't expensive, but that are interesting, just a thought process, versus spending all of our money on really big items. I mean, we all see, you go to the beach, you see on social media some of these spinners that are just fascinating, and I think that's probably one of the most popular pieces of art we have out there right now, is one that works with the wind. So it's just a thought process for the group to look at, as, as far as small things go.
And also, if we, if possible to, when we select the committee, when we put out the notification, to see if there's some young people that would be interested in filling those seats.
Sure.
Just to have their voice would be nice.
Sure. I think we can get started on that right away, get the committee organized and have it for you to approve in the next month or so.
And I believe, given the days of COVID, we need good things like this.
Yeah. I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Rodney.
Thanks Rodney.
In the Brute administration, we're always, we can't ever agree on, never agree on the same art.
All right, fiscal year 21 budget review, general fund, agency contribution.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and start this one off. You'll see this on, on the agenda every week for, from, at least on work session agendas for the foreseeable future, because we just don't know what that foreseeable future's still going to be yet. Michelle and I meet weekly, if not sometimes daily, on this, and we pull management team in as much as we need to. Can tell you that as of July 1, we are in a hiring freeze unless it is a mission critical public safety type of an issue. We are maintaining step increases at the current pay table rates for the time being. We'll, we'll have to continue to do that due to contract requirements for the, for the union labor groups, which will mean that should we get into late summer, early fall, and we are significantly higher than the $1.5 million deficit that we are 99% sure we're already sitting at, we will have to look at, at staffing. And I've said this before, and I'll continue to reiterate it, we were going to need to do organi, some organizational reviews anyway, based upon the assessed value, flatness that we're experiencing from the last triennial assessment. We are fortunate that the assessment occurred when it did, and that we are not at the end of a triennial assessment, that would not have been a good thing in this environment, but we are hopeful that July with the tax bills going out and getting results of what the cash flow looks like from those, that the impact won't be as bad, but we are certainly going to prepare for the worst and hope for the best in that case. Also, I, I hear some comments that, you know, local government is receiving all of this stimulus money, why can't that be used for operations? Just want to make sure everyone realizes that local governments have gotten zero from any stimulus package related to COVID for use for operations. Every dime that we have gotten, every penny that we have gotten, has been earmarked for other things. The CARES Act is one, the, the amount of money the, that has been given out, all went to businesses, we, we didn't keep a dime of that. So none of that money can be used for any operations. Now, we're hopeful that the federal government in the next month or so will provide some relief to, to state and local governments in the form of a stimulus bill. We maintain that we're going to hold out as long as we can before we have to make any critical decisions, hoping that money does come our way. And then that way we can maintain level of service and maintain staffing that we need to, to maintain those services. The National League of Cities are already, are saying that already more than 1,100 municipalities, three-fourths of those have already made drastic cuts to their budget, two-thirds of those are delaying or canceling capital projects, we're doing that as well. We're not just looking at staffing, we are looking at across the We're not just looking at staffing, we are looking at across the board. And this also doesn't just hit the general fund. The recession of 2009 was primarily general fund because it was a housing bust and property taxes come from our assessed value. We are still not recovered from the recession of 2009, and this hits. So all the funds are going to be hit, enterprise funds are being hit much, much harder because of the moratorium that I talked about, and the combined over a million dollars of long-term arrears we're facing now. So that's why it's going to be important that at some point soon, this moratorium can be lifted and we can get, we can look to recoup some of that money, otherwise we're going to have issues in the utilities. So I'll shut up and Michelle can talk about agency contributions.
Thank you. And actually, before I go to agency contributions, I just want to reiterate exactly all the same things that Scott has said. I think between Scott, my group in accounting, we've had the opportunity, and even Dawn and members of his Human Resources Department, all of us have had all these opportunities to participate and listen in on webinars and seminars and conferences at much deep, discounted rates, because everything has been available on webinars versus going to an actual physical conference. And I think the same story that we are hearing over and over, whether it's National League of Cities, whether it's through MML, whether it's through GFOA and Maryland GF, GFOA membership, is that, you know, the three biggest things that just about every municipality and counties are faced with is the substantial cuts to their budgets and areas that they're doing it, because all governments provide services, are staffing, and large capital projects. Again, because the biggest portion and proportion of any governmental agency budget is service-related, is our employees and the services and the projects that we do for the communities. I do want to just take a minute to, take a step back and mention that for fiscal year 20, and I think one of the struggles and one of the hardest things is, you know, we've met with union groups, we've met with department and director leaders, Scott has sent out emails because we weren't able to, all employee meetings and have everybody gather in large groups. But we're trying to reiterate where we are for fiscal year 20, and several of our funds, especially on the enterprise side of things, are probably going to have deficits. But the general fund should not expect, I do not expect the general fund to have a deficit for fiscal year 20. And that is because we were extremely fortunate in the timing of the pandemic. It hit in March after we had already received the majority of all of our general fund property tax revenue. It is by far our largest source of revenue, represents over 67 to 70% in any given year, and we received at least 97% of that by last December. So we had already received that, plus our state income tax, that's our second largest source of revenue in the general fund, and it was based primarily on 2019 tax returns. Again, we've hit our fiscal year 20 budget goals on our largest revenue sources. Combined with that, we have seen massive amounts of decreases in overtime. And why have we seen decreases in overtime? Because starting March 17th, the majority of things were shut down, courts were closed, you know? I'm president at times, but again, it has saved money in overtime, we have saved money because we had people working from home. We haven't done like everyday projects where we had everybody out and about, because there's a lot of places we couldn't go, a lot of things we couldn't do, a lot of subcontractors that weren't able to work during that time. And so realistically, I should not come back and report to Scott or to this body or our citizens that there is a deficit for fiscal year 20. So that makes it extremely hard for people to understand as an employee, then what's so different about July? We were extremely fortunate in timing of COVID for 20, extremely unfortunate for 21. Yes, we got a new tax bill, that's terrific, however, we got a new tax bill with buildings that are vacant, with landlords that don't have tenants who are paying rent, they're not paying the landlord's rent, so then the landlords can't pay their bills, you know? Banks have done things like deferred mortgage payments, so they aren't as quick maybe to pay some of the escrows. Again, timing is very important. And yes, luckily for the city of Hagerstown right now, it is our first year of our triennial assessment, meaning all the assessment was done back in December. What is going to continue to happen though, is we are expecting to see large, high-dollar appeals to occur in fiscal year 21. Our taxes that did come in are hundreds of thousands of dollars less than we originally projected in our budget. And personal property tax is based on self-reporting, and if businesses aren't open, they're not self-reporting, right? All these things that have been deferred, it's more pressing and immediate on the utility side, because the arrears and the amounts and the outstanding balances greater than 60 days are growing. Why are they growing? We can't do cutoffs, places are vacant, places are empty. We've had some confusion by some who thought that the governor's original orders meant that the city was going to actually forgive those utility bills during that time period, but that's not what the moratorium meant. Those bills and services were provided, we had our staff in place. On the electric side of things, you know, we purchase our power through a third party. We don't generate our own electricity. So we pay 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars out of the electric fund every month to that third-party payer to generate that electricity. So just like our landlords who have tenants who aren't paying their bills, we are paying for the generation of that electricity, but we're not necessarily receiving all the cash flow to reimburse what we're paying out. So again, between the cutoffs and no late fees, the cash flow side on electric, water and wastewater definitely is going to see significant declines. The same within our parking fund, you know? We've done free parking, and why have we done free parking? Because everything has been closed. But as we're gearing up, and I think we had mentioned at one point, or Scott had, that parking would start again August 1, that we would charge rates as we're putting those bills and things out, we're getting notifications back from businesses that they don't anticipate bringing staffing back for another three to six months, so they're undoing their permits. Some employers are anticipating that they've already cut half of their staff, we've heard from at least one who isn't continuing to pay that benefit for their employees. But we are, we're definitely seeing the impacts, and it's not just in the general fund, it's across the entire city. So again, great news for us, it's wonderful that fiscal year 20 is going to not have a deficit, that just means it helps secure our fund balance reserve, which we are desperately in need of right now. And then to go along with that, one of the only other things that we have seen a lot of correspondence on lately is, you know, some of the public sector have thought about doing things again, like that happened years ago after the first recession in 2008 and 2009, and that is, you know, don't contribute your full percentage towards pension side of the house for your employees. And that is a very, very bad idea. It is, it impacts many things, it impacts bond rating, it impacts the amount that's funded and unfunded, there's additional disclosures that have to happen, and it actually makes things worse. By simply trying to push that out another year, it compounds and multiplies. So again, not an area or revenue, an avenue that we would ever recommend that we do. So let's talk about fiscal year 21 budget, and again, thank you all for approving the budget as we originally had planned back January and February before everything changed so drastically. We know that we're all going to be changing, we've said it many times throughout April and May, and will continue to be here, as Scott has mentioned, over the next several weeks to just try to fine tune. We are, the majority of our revenue that we rely on others, we are the very last avenue of notification. So I'd like to say, sure, we're going to know everything in another week or two, but the reality is that we are not. You know, something as basic as our highway user dollars, we did get notification back in May, we're definitely getting a reduction in fiscal year 20, but we won't know our final fiscal year 20 numbers until August and possibly September, because the state has to provide that to all agencies because of the timing of our audits and closing of our books. So if we don't have final for fiscal year 20, we're not going to have new adjustments for fiscal year 21 all in by then either. So we're really hoping that this first quarter sees a better picture than what we're hoping to see at this point. One of the things in the general fund that we've talked about several times is agency contributions. And so I think it was in fiscal year 16, it was somewhere in calendar 2015 where we approved the policy. Prior to approving of that policy, we would spend between 275,000 up to 350,000, and it would be many, many different agencies. And what would happen is, we would start the year with a budget, and then throughout the year, a variety of agencies would come forth with suggestions and recommendations and requests, and they would be granted those requests. So we would just keep increasing what we were funding now. After a lot of deliberation with the policy, these eight core agencies were identified, and then every October, we come and we sit and we review the agencies and say, should we contribute, are these still the core agencies within the city of Hagerstown, yes or no? And what is our funding limit? And our funding limit stays since that time period between 190,000 to 205,000. So when we initially approved the fiscal year 21 budget, we actually approved a total of 284,600. And the reason that it was slightly higher than normal was because we have an extra $100,000 that we're doing to the Maryland Theater, it's part of a three-year commitment. And so we've already extended and made that obligation and that pledge, but at the time when we set to do budget, I didn't have a very clear picture, or it wasn't a priority, I guess, at that time, to remove funding from all the other agencies to offset that $100,000. And so of course, as you can imagine, many of these agencies have received other funding, and I guess I should stop. We came back at the end of May and I said, okay. Typically, what would happen at the end of the May, once the budget was approved, is I would send out a memo to all these agencies to say, our budget was approved, here's your funding level, this is what you can expect, it will start in July. They receive that money on a quarterly basis if they receive more than $5,000 in a year. So for their first quarter, that would be July through September, they would expect to receive that within the first 10 to 15 days in the month of October. So many of these agencies, even though they may not be open or open to the public, have already reached out to ask myself, I don't know if Scott's seen many emails, where do we stand, what are we doing, what can they expect? And I think at the end of May, one of the things that I heard back was that for the city of Hagerstown, there was nothing off the table in a way of looking at areas and places to possibly reduce expenses to help with where we knew we were going to be short on the revenue side. So for fiscal year 21, we have the Art Museum, they have a prior obligation, that we will be in the third and final year of it for $10,000. And then on, in addition to that $10,000, 40,500 for normal annual operations. Community Rescue Service, the budget included, $25,100 for that agency. Discovery Station, 2,500, and that money is the third and final year of an additional commitment again that we had made, so we need to finish our obligation there. Hagerstown Municipal Band for 18,000. Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership, or typically we refer to that as HNDP, for That is just the funding from the general fund, it does not include any funding that they may also receive from C WBG. Maryland Symphony Orchestra, 16,550. The Maryland Theater receives an annual allotment of 9,000 plus the additional 100,000 that we previously committed. Washington County Free Library, 30,500, and the Washington County Historical Society of 4,000. So those are the agencies, and one of the things that we went back was, we went back and asked for additional information, because again, a lot of these, a lot of these places, you know, are closed, aren't reopened, have seen a definite decrease in what they're able to provide in a way of services, just like everybody else. And with various funding sources now that were available and open, we wanted to see what other avenues, one, you know, these opportunities are out there, have they reached out in an effort to help themselves? And two, what did those funding sources look like? So I came back and we did a short little chart, and the majority of all of the agencies have reached out, have done their due diligence and have been working steadily, and just about every last one of them has received some type of awards and funding from federal or state grants. The loan group that we heard back from, Hagerstown Municipal Band, that actually stated that all their events had, that they had canceled all of their events for the remainder of this year, and so we could, the city of Hagerstown could keep the 18,000 this year, it would not impact them as all of their events were canceled, but that their goal was to definitely reapply in our fiscal year 22 cycle. So I guess this afternoon, I'm just here to see, you know, are we ready to make a decision because these agencies are asking and want to know where they stand, are they going to receive this money? Or are we going to go ahead and look at these? You know, one of the things we can do is we can reduce a little bit from each. Again, every, I know it's not large dollars, but every dollar, and I think Scott mentioned it when he said, we're doing our best, we're trying to hold out as long as possible to not impact staffing. We're not saying staffing impact is not happening in fiscal year 21, we are saying we are holding out as long as possible to minimize that, right? That has been a priority. So in an effort to do that, is there a willingness to look at any of the monies here, any agencies that have been designated, or do we want to simply remove the 18,000 from the Hagerstown Municipal Band and give everybody else what was originally approved in the budget? Do we want to say, you know, July, August, September, if they're not reopened, if maybe we just look at doing 75%, that's three months out of 12, 75% of the year? Do they have other mechanisms in place? Can they change their budget around, you know, to offset that? And just as a note, fiscal year 20, we did continue to fund all of the agencies at the levels that we had sent in our memos, meaning, you know, they received money for being March, April, May and June, and they received that same level of funding from us, even though operations were closed and they weren't doing events. Again, knowing that they still had other expenses, I'm not saying that they did not, they absolutely had expenses, and it helped. But now that we're to fiscal year 21, what is the priority, what do we wish to do? Any thoughts?
My thought is that I think we're going to have to look at every item in the budget, and as Scott pointed out, staffing, capital projects are going to have to be looked at, and I think every single one of these agency contributions needs to be looked at, and I think if we're going to be decreasing staffing and decreasing capital projects, we've got to decrease across the whole budget.
I agree with Austin, I think we need to pay our obligations, obviously, the ones that we've already obligated ourselves to, but other than that, I think we need to look and see what happens.
I would concur, and I would note, I believe, I don't think I have, but I shared with Michelle, and she shared with me, some of the monies that these folks have gotten from the federal government. And the one that I'm really curious about, because I'm curious how community rescue service would have been negatively affected, requiring layoffs, therefore requiring help. It looks like to me with the, with the money they got- therefore requiring help. It looks like to me with the money they got from the federal government, that they're probably financially better off than they've ever been since I've been around. And I don't see with that kind of federal contribution and their hefty reserves that we, that that would be one organization that somebody would have to explain to me why we would continue to fund at this time. Otherwise, I agree that we have to keep our commitments. And the other thing I would say is there is a history that this administration really hasn't, I think, gotten as much lectures on as we have in the past with the museum. The museum was founded with an agreement by the city of Hagerstown to contribute funding. I'm not saying that we should continue to fund it at the full amount. However, there are some organizations that go way back that originated with an agreement to the city when the singer started the museum. And I know the museum could give us more information on that in the years I've gone out there. They've stopped emphasizing that as much in the last couple of years, I think, because they felt secure in their funding. But otherwise, I agree that everything is opened up. And again, I don't think there's anything that should be subject to not being touched, except the commitments we've already made.
I too agree that the commitments have to be kept. But you had mentioned, and I think that it goes across the board, that our expenses were reduced because we didn't, we weren't fully open, we couldn't provide all the services, right? And so many of these are in that same position where they're either not open now, or they, I mean, I don't know when the theater is going to be open or the library at this point in time. So to reduce it, if even we said we're going to reduce it 25% across the board, would be a reasonable thought, because their expenses have been reduced also. So, and they've received quite a bit of funding from, you know, all these other areas. That would be my suggestion. And except for keeping our commitments, of course.
Yeah, I'd be interested to find out if they're still seeking, first, I'd be interested to contact each of them first to find out if they're still seeking money from us for this year.
They are.
And, let me finish. And could they provide information on funding that they received from other areas?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you have the second page.
I went back and did, I'm sorry, I went back and did that in the month of July. Actually, we sent information out in June, excuse me, because when we last met at the end of May, I felt like that was the direction I was given. So we did that.
I don't think that we, yeah, I don't think everyone has that second page.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I do have.
Well, you're very quick on giving this information to me.
Yeah, way to go, Michelle. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm scared I was lost.
Yeah, I don't think Austin sees it either.
So Lou, I can speak just quickly to CRS. They did get a big portion of the PPP, but their revenues and call volume is down significantly, because quite frankly, people haven't been calling 911 because they don't want to go anywhere near the hospital. So they have experienced significant revenue shortfalls. But I understand where you're coming.
So that changes it a little bit.
It does change the game plan for me, yeah.
Right, that's why. So all of the agencies did respond, and they respond, with the exception of the municipal band, all the agencies still want funding from the city. And the art museum has received some money. They've actually, they're always very good about finding lots of alternative revenue sources, but they actually were able to get money through the Paycheck Protection Program, which is PPP, through Maryland State Art Council, through Maryland Heritage. They also have, so some monies that they had already received, and they utilized that money specifically what they got from the Paycheck Protection Program, they've already spent that in fiscal year 20 to help pay for their staff and ongoing efforts. They had another $216,000 pending in other additional grants. And some of these may also include, you know, money through the CARES Act that the county actually has available now. A lot of, just about every last one of our core agencies had applied in some fashion through the county. Community Rescue Service received money through the Paycheck Protection Program, $664,000. The municipal band, again, they didn't send anything else back other than to say, go ahead and retain our $18,000. And they hope that that helped us in our efforts. And that they would reseek additional funding in fiscal year 22. HNDP, or Hagerstown Neighborhood Development, had already received some money through the Payroll Protection Program. And they're one that definitely, if they didn't apply for some other sources, should look, because I think that there's money out there that should be able, hopefully should be able to help them. Maryland Symphony Orchestra received money through Paycheck Protection Program, also through the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which was EIDL. And then they have a pending request through Washington County for Rise Up Together. The Maryland Theater has received money from Paycheck Protection Program, through Community Foundation, and also expecting money through the CARES funding money through the county. Washington County Free Library has received various grants and also monies primarily from the Payroll Protection Program. And then last but not least is Washington County Historical Society. And the amount of money that the city contributes there is very small. You can actually see, excuse me, a listing, they have really applied for a lot of grants and have been successful. Now, all of the ones who received more than $5,000, I said we pay them quarterly at the end of each quarter. The Washington County Historical Society, since their dollar amount is under $5,000, they would typically get that as a one lump sum check, and we would send that in July. So again, we can, I can wait. I just, I just don't want to wait and come back and come back in July or August or September when we have a better idea for the city, because I know all of these agencies are facing the same thing. They're redoing their budgets and they're making adjustments where they need to adjust. So if we want to pursue something and say, let's do a 25% across the board reduction, I can let them all know. I can, and I'll leave that up to them.
Michelle, given these numbers here, I don't think 25% is enough of a reduction.
And I'm fine with that. It's an option, right?
Could we maybe find out what, listen, everybody who got PPP is a new program. So that's new money. That's money that they never would have gotten any other time in the history of whatever entity they are, okay? So those numbers there far outweigh the amount of money we're getting. Yeah, I'm thinking 25% is not enough. I mean, especially when you talk about the Historical Society, there are $63,000. If they received our $4,000, there's nothing compared to that amount of money. I believe that the council needs to come to some kind of determination. And again, the library's not open yet. Maryland Symphony Orchestra, I guess, I guess they're doing some stuff that I saw remotely and doing, but they're not holding concerts. The Maryland Theater isn't open yet, although I know they have some things pending coming up that hopefully they can get.
Okay, so we need about a quarter, three months, to figure out our budget. So why don't we just give everyone 25% and revisit it once we know a clearer picture of what our budget looks like?
I'd rather tell everybody we'll wait until our quarter is up to decide what we're going to do.
I'm trying to make the decision.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's got more money than we're.
Than ever.
Right. I really see cutting substantially. I mean, I can't imagine somebody gets $700,000 that they never had before unless they can show us that they lost a whole lot more than $700,000.
Well, and I think most businesses can. I can't speak to their exact numbers, but I know.
It's a big number.
I don't see Discovery Station on here. Did they not receive any?
The money that we give them actually is our very final year, but an extra obligation. So I didn't include that because I truly felt like if the city has already made a prior commitment and an obligation, I didn't want to put us in a position where we didn't want to.
I don't care about giving $2,500. I'd just like to know if they had some help.
And typically, we don't give them agency contributions. There was a one-time pledge, so I didn't ask the Discovery Station for that information.
Yeah, I think we hold off on doing anything until we get our, until we get our dubs in a row within the next three months.
Hold off?
Yes. Tell them everything is pending the outcome of our, of our first quarter.
Yes, I can do that.
All right. Anything else from you? Any other good, great news? All right, Austin, anything from you?
I just wanted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. Well, every time I've asked you after your COVID update, you don't have anything else.
I'm used to it.
Well, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. I want to thank the Parks Department, our police force, our fire department for the great work they did for the fireworks Saturday night. Again, it was a tremendous show. I will say, the one concern I have was the additional 15 or 20 fireworks shows that were going on around Fairgrounds Park and around the city as a whole to a volume and quality that I haven't seen ever in Hagerstown. And that is concerning because I did, I was shown by one of the fire marshals that were there, some of the confiscated shells that were literally mortar shells that they were taking away from people. And that's a concern that I think we as a community need to have addressed. And I hope to do that between now and then. Don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but it was, I know my grandsons were, didn't know where to look, because we had our show and all over, there were shows going on. It was nuts. So, but thanks to, great job as always, the Parks Department, the police force, and the fire department.
Do you think about 30%?
What's that?
You think it was about 30% that showed up over Fairgrounds?
Yeah, everybody, yeah, I would say it was probably that at the most. But everybody that was there, we always stay on the Fairground Avenue side by the soccer fields. Everybody was social distanced. Nobody was crowding around. Masks were being worn, were being worn as they were walking around. I was very, very pleased.
But people take the personal responsibility.
Exactly. Which is what we hoped they would do, and they did. So. Little update on, little update on tech sale parcels, on the chronic tech sale parcels. We have two nonprofits that have submitted applications to be involved in the program. They're now getting the listing of parcels that we have as the first group that we talked about. And we look to get applications on interest for those, and we try to get some of these parcels moved. So just to let you know, that process is moving forward. And I think that's going to make a big difference down the road on getting rid of some of these chronic tech sale parcels. One last thing, I just want to express a lot of sadness and my condolences to the Reader family. Rick Reader, who was the organizer along with Dave Foltz on the Roundball Classic and the Baseball Diamond Classic that's been happening for the last several years, Rick passed away last night. That man met a, had a huge influence on a lot of local kids, men and women, boys and girls, and that were given chances that they would not have gotten if they had not been showcased in this tournament that started just with a couple of games on a Saturday, All-Star Games, that grew into a quad state showcase event. Five-star blue chip athletes that came to Hagerstown and got to put on shows. They got to play with, with local athletes from our area that would have never gotten a chance to play with quality players that they did. And a lot of them moved on to college and got to play because of Rick Reader and Dave Foltz giving them a chance to do that. And he passed away after a fairly sudden illness. And I'm going to miss him. Great guy, first voice of the ACC basketball that I got to follow out there for several years. And the community is sincerely going to miss him. And just wanted to publicly say that he's going to be, he's going to be truly missed in this. And I hope Foltz is able to keep this Roundball Classic going. I know I'll be there to help him, do what I can. I know this community will back him. And that's it for me. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Austin?
Just wanted to echo what Scott said about the fireworks. I thought the quality of our fireworks was really good. And the only reason I can imagine there was so much competition going on is I guess people thought we really weren't going to have the fireworks, so they went out and stocked up on the, on the big boy stuff. But it was impressive to see what was going on around the neighborhood too. But I agree with your concerns. I think we were very lucky. We didn't have any roofs on fire that we had to respond to. But I was very pleased out there with the, the personal responsibility that our citizens took. I saw the same thing you did. And I was biking all around the place while it was going on, you know, looking at people. And everybody was, everybody was having a great time, and they were taking responsibility. They were socially distanced. And as you said, when they were in groups, they had masks. And I think that's a testament to what we can do to reopen, you know, if we, if we charge people with that kind of responsibility and, and hope they take it.
I don't have anything tonight other than thankful to be back around humans. So hopefully this is step one of getting back to normal.
Lou? Thank you, Mayor. I didn't make it after the fireworks, but I am very pleased to hear how it went. And I would also like to congratulate our citizens. There's been unfortunately so much political brouhaha about the use of things like these masks and other things. And what I have to say is very simple. We in Maryland should be very proud. When we look around this nation and we see what's going on in Arizona and Texas and Florida and other states, and look at the statistics, there's a lot of criticism about our governor refusing to open up as early as people wanted them to open up. But when you look at what's going on in the nation now, it worked. And as long as we can continue as citizens to continue to follow some very simple rules, we're all going to be fine here. We're going to be fine as we watch people die in other states. So we should be happy with our governor. We should be proud to be Marylanders. And we should be very proud of ourselves to have gotten this far so far without the troubles of other places. Thank you, Mayor.
It's just good to be back in person. That's it.
Well, I said I was going to the fireworks, and I went to the fireworks. And I was very happy to see that people were doing what was asked of them. And as Scott said, I had my grandson. All the other fireworks here going on around, it's tough to stay focused. But you know, I hear what Lou, what Lou says, and I respect that. And I'll say that, you know, I have great faith in the human spirit, that they will do what they need to do in order to be protective of themselves and their families and all those things. And I believe that, you know, locally, what we've been able to accomplish and looking at our numbers, our COVID numbers and everything, I, you know, I, I feel very proud to live in the community that I live in. So, having said that. So having said that, thank you all very much for helping us to have a great fireworks show and to be able to open up to where we are right now and enjoy ourselves and enjoy each other. And let's continue to do so and hopefully get back to normal at some point in time. We're adjourned. Thank you.